What did you think when you found out that a character had been named after you?
Um, I think it's great.
Well, okay, so first off Darla was kind of a, okay, well, first off Darla was kind of an evil villain, which is her right there, and holding um, a fish in a bag. So most likely she's hunting for fish. I don't know, but uh, yeah.
It's a little bit of a mixed bag, cause she's kind of a, um, she's kind of, is it the word villain?
Yes, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you so much, villain, yes, 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 and yes. Yes, that's what I know, she's a villain, and I said villain, so we're both correct. We're both correct.
Have played a million practical jokes on Mr. Andrew Stanton, and I think he's just his way of getting me back.
First of all, she's a villain with braces and holding a fish in a bag. So that's just that, so yeah.
Close.
Okay, Ellen Degeneres Recording Session outtakes November to 2002, and before we start this, guys, um, welcome to episode 5, we're halfway to episode 10, and that's crazy, and um, yeah. So we left off, um, we kinda recap or covered some of, some of the parts that we done, and then, um, yeah. So I can tell that's a very long video, a very long visual commentary that they done, like a long, long time ago before I was born, I was born in September 12th, 2003, and it says here, November of 2002, cause it's getting close to 2003 before I was born, but not quite, I was born in September 12th, and um, yeah. So let's get going, and here we go.
Oh, some pinatas drooping. No, E equals MC squared, and you know it.
Why is Dory, why is Dory doing math in her sleep? So while she's sleeping, she always thinks of math, being in school, okay? I don't know why, but um, that's how she does, and just, sure.
You have a bad haircut, Bobby.
What? A bad haircut?
Banana who? Aren't you glad? Big money, no whammies.
That is weird, aren't you glad? That I didn't say orange, or banana, or apple, or either one, I don't know, but uh, aren't you glad? I didn't say, we're at episode 5, halfway done to episode 10, we're halfway to episode 10, so um, yeah. Music and effects. Okay, whoa, chill out. Okay? That's scary, so bad. Look how sharp those teeth are on that fish, P Sherman. Walleye Way Sydney? I guess, I mean, yeah. Oh, oh, oh! Ah! Hold on, wait, that is scary, guys, look at this. Wait. Okay, lights out. Look at this, look at this, look at this. So he ate that fish, and it's alive, but Marlin is in there, and... I, okay, so that, that made me feel so weird, I, I, I don't know why, but um, as you can see, over here, that's Marlin inside of that fish. Alive, not dead, but alive. What? Weird, okay.
These three tiki heads are actual caricatures of Pixar employees.
Okay, so the first um, tiki head is the Peter Sean, he, Peter Saw, or Sawan, or Sean, or whoever. Um, he's a production artist, as we can tell from a couple of episodes back during season 4, cause that's where we, we kept on during season 4, before we start with season 5, so uh, we kinda know almost everything, so yeah. Okay, now it's broken, and breaking your ear, okay. And here they are, right there, awesome, alright, cool, next.
Andrew was very clear of that he wanted this, um, this shot like we've never done before at Pixar, and so we used an extremely wide lens, which allowed us to get the camera really close to everything in the tank, and we're moving incredibly fast through a very small space, hitting very specific visual marks to tie in to the story.
Yeah. From a lighting perspective, uh, the shot also presents a difficult challenge insofar as there are setups for inside the tank clean, inside the tank with algae, outside the tank in the air, outside the tank in-
Cause um, pools can carry lots of algae, they don't clean that, they don't clean that much, they don't clean tanks, pools, or anything like that, that much, because some fish can be in the, in the bag, because if there's lots of algae in that tank, you know, a lot of fish can be in that bag, so um, yeah.
The baggy, baggy moving indoors and outdoors in several sets.
Yep, okay, cool, alright, next.
We used a tool called Pisces, which simulates the behavior of the fish. We would set up a bunch of basic parameters, where the school would be, how fast they should swim, and then simulate, and do iterations of that until we got something we liked. The number of fish that we would simulate would vary from 5 for a little small school on the reef to a couple thousand for some of the big hero schools and background schools. There was a lot of simulations where we would put a lot of fish in, and then just kill the ones that were misbehaving. So basically, hundreds of CG fish died to make this movie.
Oh, oh, they died? They died. Okay, so uh, that's not good at all, so uh, yeah, alright, um, okay. It's sad.
You wouldn't know how to get there, would you?
What you wanna do is follow the EAC, that's uh, East Australian Current. Big current, can't miss it, it's in that direction.
You wouldn't know how to get there, would you?
What you wanna do is follow the EAC, that's uh, East Australian Current. Big current, can't miss it, it's in that direction.
You wouldn't know how to get there, would you?
What you wanna do is follow the EAC, that's uh, East Australian Current. Big current, can't miss it, it's in that direction.
Okay, so if I wanna go back, okay, so yeah, so if I wanna go back... Yeah, school, progression reel. So first off, they did the storyboard, the storyboard, right?
You wouldn't know how to get there, would you?
What you wanna do is follow the EAC, that's uh, East Australian Current. Big current, can't miss it, it's in that direction.
And then, and then they did the layout, okay?
What you wanna do is follow the EAC, that's uh, East Australian Current. Big current, can't miss it, it's in that direction.
Yeah, you know how this layout is, is like that, because it kinda lags a little bit, so um, yeah.
You wouldn't know how to get there, would you?
And then, then, and then now it's the animation, so uh, as I said, on a couple of um, episodes back during season 4, so yeah.
What you wanna do is follow the EAC, that's uh, East Australian Current. Big current, can't miss it, it's in that direction.
And then the final version, which is it put into a whole movie.
Well, we needed to figure out how jellyfish move for one, and that was kind of what this was, was all about, and this was also to figure out the, give them something to figure out all of the dynamics down below with-
We began by taking um, simple spheres as standards for jellyfish, and sprinkling them in, in the volume, and pointing a camera to that direction. We had no idea how complicated the path is gonna be from that attempt at a simplistic view of the set, to fully realizing the set, with all the jellies moving all different directions, the camera flying through that in three dimensions, with no reference for ground plane, ceiling, or walls, the characters interacting with the jellies, the jellies being see-through, and the whole thing together became quite a mess untangled.
Quite a Pandora's Box, this little, this little guy right here, but it was worth it, cause it's beautiful in the film. It's a beautiful scene.
Yeah, okay, cool, alright.
One of the most important elements to make the tank look believable in the set that it was in, was the use of reflections and refractions, um, looking from outside in and inside back out. Took both videotape footage, stuck our heads in tanks, stuck our heads outside tanks, and stared at the fish in the tank down stairs to really get a sense for how the image gets warped and distorted by the glass and water interface. The effect itself, the physics are well understood, um, to do it in computer graphics, uh, cheaply is hard, and especially to cheat it so we can control it, which is one of the key things about it, and so we weren't able to just duplicate physics directly, we need to put controls into adjust it and fudge it.
Okay. I mean-
Where are you from, Gil?
Okay, well, I'm saying, okay, because I can know everything, because I have learned all that before season 5, so uh, I just, sure, alright.
You wouldn't have heard of it Shark Bay, it's a rough part of the ocean.
Where is the rough part of the ocean?
Use your tail, your tail, it's called Bad Luck Bay, place is sort of shaped like a human skull.
Cool.
Also known as a lie.
Let's see.
Gil told you a lie every single time, he lies to you, it's not true at all, it's just fake. Move on, move on with your life, it, it's all lies, okay, it's all lies, it came from that book, you don't have a brother, you don't have a sister, you don't have no one. That's all lies, just move on, and just forget about it, okay? Just, just do it.
Marco, Polo, Lester, Linus, and Lulu.
Lulu?
Lying, 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 you're lying, you're so lying, you're so lying.
Of course they will, it's Friday. Gil's right, all major revelations happen on Friday.
No, Gil is not right, he's liar, he's, he's a liar. Gil should not be a leader, leader, he, he's a liar. You see that? He's lying to you, what a liar, what a liar, oh my gosh, what a liar, what a liar! You are wrong, you are a liar, you are a liar. You're a liar, Gil, you're a liar.
So what happened after I got stung?
I just told you. You had gotten lost in the jellyfish forest, okay? And I had to go find you, are you still with me? So after I found you, you got stung pretty bad. Okay, quick recap, you get lost, then found, then stung, ouch ouch, now did you get all that? Still don't look like you were listening, cause you know when your eyes go past me like that, I have a hard time believing you're listening. Oh!
Dude! Jellyfish. Intense, man.
They're intense, jellyfish are intense.
Dory, this is Crush.
Facts.
Uh, Crush here actually knows a whale.
Yeah, we all know the whale, man, he used to be known for the whale. He's a very wise dude, man. Right now, the whale's like out there, man.
Out?
Feet, no.
Or just to your left, right, or far, behind you.
Did you see that?
Well, I see, what, what was that? Did you just make me look, look behind? I see nothing but else, I see legit nothing at all, I see nothing at all, I see nothing. Boy, boy, girl, girl, boy. Okay, so boy, girl, boy and girl, so just boys and girls, so yeah.
So this lamp of a lighthouse is an actual lighthouse, uh, that exists on Thatcher Island off of my hometown of Rockport, Massachusetts, and uh, it's called the Twin Lights. There's one on each side of the island, and there's actually one on each side of the lobby, there's two lamps.
There's two.
This is a historical building that is in my hometown called the Motif Number One.
Right.
It's in the harbor, and a lot of people come from all around just to paint it, so I put a painting of it in the lobby. This is the Aeolus III, it's the name of my father's sailboat, and I'm embarrassed to say that it was the 11th hour when I suddenly realized I had not put that on any of the boats in the movie, so I, we changed one of the boats at the last second, and got it in there, I think I would have been disowned had I forgotten that. Lobsters are abundant where I grew up in New England, and I know we're all the way down in Australia, but I just couldn't resist letting the lobster have a Massachusetts accent, thus using the term wicked. It's like wicked dark down there, you can't see a thing, how's it going, Bob?
Okay, now, here comes my favorite part. So uh, I think it was a couple of episodes back. It's about the whole dentist thing, pulling out someone's teeth, have no teeth at all, Luigi, and I don't know why, it's a bunch of nonsense, I don't know, it's all dumb, but um, it might be true, but it sounds dumb, so uh, it might be, it might be sound, it might, it sounds kinda dumb, so uh, let's just see how it goes, so uh, yeah. Beef fryer, extra crispy, okay, well, um, okay, okay, what, okay, why am I, why am I seeing that again? That, that award, gums most likely to receive, to receive an award. This honor is bestowed upon Dr. Philip Sherman. Of course, for gums, for what that one day received. I don't know why, I don't know what's gonna happen soon, I don't know what the heck is gonna happen, but um, yeah. Captain and skipper, these are the two signatures that, that they've done, so uh... What, why, 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 why am I gonna see those awards again? Alright, why, okay, so that, that letter again, really, it's just... Why, why do I have to read this letter again? Dear Dr. Sherman, I wanted to thank you for, for your point out on my teeth. This is, this is, that, that is nonsense, and dangerous. How can I supposed to read the whole entire thing without cringing? It's weird, it is weird, it is weird, it is so weird, it is weird, I could say it 10 times, it is weird, it is weird, it is weird, and it is weird. It was neat that you had a wrench handy. Why do you have a wrench? Why? Oh wow, now you have this, it's been a month now, and it still really hurts, why? Because you pulled, no, look, you, you had a wrench in, in your hand, and somehow you pulled every single teeth out. Why? If you ever need your, your teeth pulled, let me know from your guy Luigi, so I just, and look, I am so happy, wow, you're not, it hurts you, it really does hurt you. It hurts you so bad, it, 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 it hurts you. Look, I am visualizing this whole entire episode, because look, what I've seen is just, look, every, every single time, every single time, I don't know why, but every single time, it's just nonsense at all, I don't know why, but that is nonsense. Okay, Society of Venture Weavers of Nor, of New South Wales, toothless, I don't know why. So we are seeing, okay, so we saw two rewards and one note. Pixar, engineers by, by a bunch of Pixar TDs. I mean, do I have to repeat that every single time, do I have to, um, every time I watch that? I don't know. Hi, hi, Emmyville, how's it going? You doing good? I'm good, I'm scared.
Joseph Eckers is one of our story guys, and he did research on this part of the world.
Oh, okay, now here's the East Australian Current, it's there, it's close to Australia. You can see that, you can see up here, so um, cool.
Relax, take a deep breath. Feel yourself floating, imagine the scent of lavender.
Okay, we're back, Dory.
Okay, we're still breathing.
No, we're not breathing now, we're back.
Balance the chi.
Dory, the chi is fine, we got normal chi now.
Alright, cool.
We are lost.
That's her, that, that's her, um, doing the Dory voice session thing, so that's good.
Can you give us directions? There, that should do it, and I just realized that we're being videotaped now, so, and when I say we, I mean me. So this is perfect.
Great job, Ellen, good job. Okay, early test of June 2001, okay, with this. Oh yeah, that's part where, um, Marlin is behind that, well, the whale is behind Marlin, and then he gets hit by a whale, and then yeah. Uh, Marlin, that whale's behind you. Marlin, watch behind you, look, look behind you, a whale, yeah, yeah, okay, sure, okay. Why do you have to go, go through that? Just look behind you, that, that, that's all, you sure moved. You sure moved, you sure moved, you sure moved.
Don't worry, whales don't eat clownfish, they eat krill. Oh look, krill.
And now here's the trailer of it, so, cool, okay. Scoring session, December of 2002, I mean, that, that's a nice, that's a nice uh, sound. Cool, I guess, okay. I just seen the time, that's all. And scene. Great, good job, guys, alright.
There, there, it's alright, it'll be okay.
Guys, can, can you spot the difference between Dory saying sir and Dory without saying sir? Look, listen how Dory say sir on, on each different parts. One is outside, and two is in that whale's mouth, so uh, you see that in here, so watch. Cause guys, if you're wearing headphones, you'll, you'll listen the difference on your left, on your left ear, and then you'll listen to it on your right ear for the difference, so if you're wearing headphones, so uh, yeah.
There, there, it's alright, it'll be okay.
When you go to make computer-generated water, one of the problems is, is that water's really not one thing. When you look at a scene with water, and it, there's, the water surface itself, and then there's spray, which is really just small loose particles, and then there's a transition zone where if you watch a wave as it comes up, it'll come up and break into little tiny particles, little blobs that still look clear, they still look like water, and then they fragment more and turn into spray. It's the believability of that transition that's the hardest thing to do right in, in computer-generated water. And the reason is, when we model something with particles, the particles we use are bigger than the size of the spray drop, just because of the computational requirements. If you really wanted to do a shot like the whale tongue shot, you would really need billions of parti-
First off, why would you put a camera inside of a whale? Why? It's weird.
Particles of water, but we can't do that, you know, we can at most do millions. And so we have a lot of tricks that go into taking this fairly coarse grain description of the dynamics, turn it into a surface as the surface moves around, and then cheat the transition in various ways of the surface from a solid surface of water breaking down into spray, and then splashing off.
We'll get a shot like this out of animation, right, that has no water, you know, just the character sort of holding on, and director will tell us, oh, I want like a whole ton of water at the beginning, and it'll sort of ramp down over the progression of the shot. And so the first thing we do, is we start out with these things that got dubbed ball pit renders, because it looks like, you know, a big Chuck E. Cheese ball pit. Problem is, sometimes water doesn't do what you want, right? And so we showed this to the director, and he's like, well, I don't think he could talk, you know, if he was under that much water. And then once we get something that we're happy with-
Yeah, because if you're in the water, then you can't talk at all, so uh, yeah.
This ball pit level, then we'll go, and we'll actually try to form-
And even though, um, if you pour water, um, in your face, then you couldn't talk at all, so uh, that's the key. Yeah, okay, ball pit render, and yada, 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 and um, February 14th, 2003, oh, close, close to, close to um, September. And this was made at the time at 11:15, so yeah.
Form a mesh out of it, this sort of takes all the particles, and then where there's a lot of particles, where it really should be a solid mass of water, it gives us the solid surface that we can use. And then everywhere else, you get these particles, and we're pretty happy with how this looks.
Now, this was made at the same day, but at a different time, 11:03, so uh, I think AM, AM PM, I think I am, so yeah.
Out of his face now, so he can actually read his facial expressions.
Oh, wire sam render, okay.
And then it'll go to shading and lighting, they'll do this like fancy sort of transparency, and they'll, you know, actually make it look like water, and then that's sort of what you end up seeing.
Yeah, okay, cool. Okay, the boat, sea monkey, major plot point, boat moving, I bow. That's a hard word, that's a weird word to say, the birds, cool. Peer pressure, cool, okay, and that's, okay, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, who names their boat like that? Who? Who names their boat like that? That's a weird name to say for a boat, that's wrong, and uh, yeah, it's wrong. The Surly Mermaid, Mermaid, uh, LQAA North, or N. The Surly Mermaid, Mermaid, uh, LQU 888 North, or N.
I found his dad!
Whoa. Okay. Am I, okay, oh, cool.
A lot of people don't realize that seagulls actually speak in other languages than English.
English.
Mine.
French, oh, sorry, Spanish, first of all.
Mio.
Nah, French.
Mien.
German.
Mai.
Portuguese.
Meow.
Japanese.
Boganow.
Swedish.
Ni.
Russian.
Moi.
Hebrew.
Cheli.
Czech.
Moya.
Tagalog.
Hakken.
Greek.
Tegamo.
Slow down, please, Nepalese.
Nero.
Serbo. Serbo creation, I think, I don't know, Serbo what? Hold on.
Mai. Mio. Mien. Mai. Meow. Boganow. Ni. Moi. Cheli.
Czech.
Moya.
Tagalog.
Hakken.
Greek.
Tegamo.
Nepalese.
Nero.
Okay, Serbo Croatian, Croatian, okay, okay, okay.
Mai.
Farsi.
Moneyman.
Scots, Gaelic.
Lomser.
Okay. Got that down, and good.
In a big, uh, action scene like, like this Pelican sequence, we'll oftentimes build much more footage than we'll end up using in the final film. I think this was three to one, a- approximately, for footage that we created and then the shots that were actually used in the final film. What we actually did in the scene is, you know, we knew the basic action that needed to happen, uh, Nigel needs to take off with father and Dory, and his beak swoop into the water, and then fly around being chased by the, uh, by the seagulls. And what we did was we basically blocked out that entire action flying around the harbor, and then filmed it lots of different ways, big wide shots, tracking shots, shots moving through the air, shots locked on the ground, panning, seeing them go by, and- And we just really went to town building a huge amount of footage, and then we found the final scene, uh, in the editing room.
Okay, so, um, so we're at 29:15, and we have six minutes left to spare. So what we can do is stop there, and that's a good way to end off with, alright, good. So, um, yeah, so till episode five, uh, this might be the finale, because we can't reach to, um, episode 10, because it's impossible to reach, um, episode 10. So, um, yeah. Okay, so, um, I kinda, so I kinda, um, enjoy like, like a little bit, but somehow, um, this whole entire award and, uh, the letters have gone way too far because about pulling teeth and having the Toothless Green Award, I mean, I- I don't know how, but that's weird, I mean, I don't know who does that, it's really crazy, it's insane, and, um... Yeah. Yeah, it- it's, it's just Luigi had that idea, I don't know how, because, um, Luigi wants to do that and have that award to himself, I don't know why, but that's insane. So, yeah, so that's all we, uh, we have covered on so far, and then till episode five finale, and, um, yeah. So I really enjoyed it, but somehow it got me weird, just- just, um, a slight bit, so, um, yeah. So, guys, till episode, uh, five, um, if you wanna, um, episode five, just leave a like, and then also comment any questions, so that I can, um, answer it back, and then, um, just comment any suggestions on, on what's your favorite part with episode four, and, um... Yeah, just let me know, down in the com- in the, down in the comments below. So, yeah, that wraps up for episode four, and, um, yeah, and also if you need my channel, hit that subscribe button, and then, and then if you to my Patreon, whenever I upload a new video live, and share this video to- to spread the word out, and, um, yeah. So, till then, guys, um, I'll have to see y'all soon with episode five. Bye! Okay, so that was a, um, a fun little bit of a recap there. I mean, first of all, who wants to get their teeth pulled? No one does. It hurts.